Go ahead.
Good evening, welcome to the seventh meeting of the year. Today is May fifth, twenty twenty five. Alyssa can please read the uh publication.
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, has been published in the New York Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty five, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website and the front door of the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mary Gindi.
Here.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertenski.
Here.
Council President Seola.
Here.
Please stand for a second.
The citizens of the United States of America, and as your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. She has no allegations or presentations, so we are going to launch a new business. Uh twenty twenty five dash one fifty of the I C reading of twenty twenty five budget by title only. Alyssa.
Resolution twenty twenty five one fifty, resolution to re-budget by title only. Whereas NJSA forty A colon four dash eight provides that the budget be verified title only at the time of the public hearing if the resolution is passed by not less than the majority of the full governing bodies, providing that at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget as advertised will be posted in town hall and copies have been made available by the clerk to persons requiring them. And whereas these two conditions have been met, now therefore being as hereby resolved, the budget shall be reviewed by title only. Do you have a motion to pass that resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by uh Councilwoman Dallas, second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa adoption of twenty twenty five municipal budget.
I'm gonna do the public hearing first.
I'd like to open up to the public, five minutes.
Good evening, everyone, Joe Donato from thirty Daley Street, South River. I'll make uh two things. Uh one is uh the battery project I asked for information, I did receive the information. I'm hoping that you answer my questions. Think I'm missing a few things, I've got to go uh check.
We're talking about the budget.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Public, I'm sorry, public, I forgot.
Well, I will remind you.
Whoa, whoa.
I will remind you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh just the first call, second call, third call.
Motion closed.
Motion by Councilman Gertenski, second by Council President Seola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh discussion? Your motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Council Pres- uh Councilman Gertenski, second by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget, public hearing of twenty twenty five budget resolution. We just have.
We did it. We did it.
I am so sorry. I just have sessions. Uh according to second reading, we have three, Art, enjoy to uh talk about the uh first one, twenty twenty five dash ten.
Which one?
The ca- uh handicapped part.
Ten. Fourteen?
Uh.
Ten.
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 Handicapped parking space for Catherine, been approved by the police.
Okay, thank you. Joe, uh twenty twenty five eleven, uh recreation fees.
Yes, this was recommended by the recreation committee uh to increase some fees and um so for a couple of time. This came from the recreation committee.
Art, uh twenty twenty five dash twelve, which is on Reed Street.
Yeah, um this is the parking lot for the office on aging, the recreation department. Um we need happen ordinance in place to enforce people not doing rural business from parking in the block. That's what it's all about.
And then for first reading, we have four. Um the EMS, which I could talk a little bit more about it, we are cleaning out the OEM uh trailer. We found a lot of uh old OEM uh material, uh sorry, EMS uh equipment, which we ended up donating it to the Miltown Rescue Squad since they are one of our mutual aid. So as with that's for uh the next ordinance, twenty twenty five dash fourteen, Andrea, which is on the bamboo.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh twenty twenty five fourteen, this is just an amendment to your property maintenance article. It uh establishes new ways to plant bamboo uh to to maintain it in a uh in a secluded area, uh and it also puts in provisions to prevent it from spreading.
Art, can you talk about the twenty twenty five fifteen, we actually thought.
What that is, is the lease law on South River and uh enforcement of it. The code enforcement officer within the list, they really don't, not part of our function. So we're taking the code enforcement officer out and replacing her with the animal patrol officer, who had been giving out tickets for every time you see on Facebook that we found another dog. This will now, when the people come to pick up your dog, they're gonna get a ticket too.
Okay. And then Art, the next one, which is twenty twenty five sixteen.
Maple Street, uh you know, the parking is limited in um the office on aging parking lot. And there was an existing um. Loading zone, thank you. Existing loading zone on Maple Street, there aren't buildings there anymore. And as long as it's still ordinance, it could be enforced by the police and we can't park there. So this will take that loading zone away and make more parking.
Alright, thank you. Alyssa, we're gonna go to the first, the second reading, which is the twenty twenty five ten.
Ordinance twenty twenty five ten, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, chapter one ninety three, entitled vehicles and traffic by amending section one ninety three dash thirty one point one, schedule two A, handicap parking thereof.
Second.
Motion by Councilman DeZemian, second by Councilman uh DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open it to the public? First call? Second call?
Motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Giannakopoulos.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? What is your motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas.
Second.
Second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five eleven.
Ordinance twenty twenty five eleven, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one fifty five entitled fees.
Motion.
Motion by Council President, uh Councilman DeZemian.
Second.
Second by Council President Seola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open this to the public? First call? Second call?
Motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? What is your motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council.
Second.
Councilwoman Dallas, second by Councilman Gertenski.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash twelve.
Ordinance twenty twenty five twelve, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled vehicles and traffic.
What is your motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, second by Councilman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open it up to the public?
Jim Lichson, thirty eighth Virginia Street, speaking on behalf of the Office on Aging. If this affects along with the park and recreation, um I strongly urge everybody to support this motion uh in this ordinance as uh there's been times like weekends and so forth where members of the also aging even partner have gone to the building, parking lot is full, especially on Sundays, um other people are parking in there, you're not sure what's going on. So I want to make sure that's private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from this public? First call?
Motion to close. Second.
Motion by Councilman Gertenski, second by Councilman Giannakopoulos.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? What is your motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas. Second by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alright, we're gonna go to first reading. Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash thirteen, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty five thirteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of various EMS equipment not needed for public use accordance with the provisions NJSA forty A colon twelve dash twenty one point one to the Miltown Rescue Squad.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on June the second, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash fourteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five fourteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter two fifty eight entitled property maintenance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen on its first reading by title only. The clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on June the second, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash fifteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five fifteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one oh eight entitled animals.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifteen on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on June the second, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five sixteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled vehicles and traffic.
Move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen on its first reading by title only. The clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on June the second, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
We're gonna go into our reports, uh Justin, C M E.
Thank you, Mayor, just a brief summary of the Capitol Project Status Report prepared by Bruce Koch from my office. For the NJ DOT fiscal year twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four local aid program, the contractor has completed sanitary sewer work and paving on Leonard Dean Avenue. Uh speaking with the contractor this week, they plan on coming back the week after Memorial Day to finish their paving. For the twenty twenty three local aid transportation projects grant, our office submitted plans and specs to the DOT to review and we're waiting on their comment. Twenty twenty five local aid program, our South River received a little over a million, half a million dollars and um our office submitted a proposal for professional services. Uh twenty twenty three electrical substation maintenance, the contractor has completed the testing and maintenance. They sent our office a report this week and we expect to close them out within the upcoming week. Uh NJ D E P stormwater assistance grant, our survey department completed work that was required before May. Um we submitted a proposal and I believe it's on today's agenda. And then the last item in the report is that DOT released their list of twenty twenty six municipal aid applications. That's all, thank you.
And thank you. Councilor, anything for uh Justin?
Just one quick thing, Justin, can you check when they're coming back with the paving on Leonard Dean? If they're gonna be painting all the intersections up and curving, you know, all that.
Right, after they complete the paving, they'll be back out there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh Joe, you have one?
Three resolutions on the agenda, Mayor. First one is resolution to approve a purchase of dispatch furniture under national co-op uh this provided in the bond ordinance two years ago. Second one is a chapter one fifty nine to include special items of revenue in the budget now that the budget has been adopted. That is recycling tonnage grant, twenty three thousand, one hundred and seventy three dollars and twenty cents. Recycling enhancement grant, five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty five cents. And two thousand twenty five local recreation grant, eighty nine thousand, which is for pickleball courts at uh Barker Park. And then last one is what Justin just said, um resolution for stormwater work for C M E to get that project, how many did you get, which is required in the majesty.
Councilor, anything for uh Joe? Alright, uh Mayor Chief. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Currently all units are in service, we have no issues, we're on target for this year. Council? Andrew?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Um just that the primary election is coming up, uh it's gonna be June ten. Um the county has sent out the mail in ballots starting on uh April twenty fourth, so if you have a mail in ballot, you can fill it out and you can drop it off at the drop box in front of forty eight Washington.
Thank you. Art?
Yeah, uh first I have Adriano's report from DPW. Uh first I can report that the substation is a hundred percent operating. After the unfortunate incident on Friday, everything is back working. Uh also informing the public that he's starting summer hours soon, so we're hearing the garbage trucks out earlier than one because they harden them to work in the heat. So they're out for the next couple of months a little earlier in the day. And they're closed Memorial Day, so there'll be no brush pickup on that Monday. Uh for my report, uh I can uh report that uh ninety percent of the meter project is completed now. We're down to the last ten, which is like five hundred meters. Doing some personal visits and phone calls myself. Um once that stops, both people who have refused uh to either hear our letters or had told the person that's been making phone calls over my dead body, uh they will be telling that to the judge. Because we want to get this done, the meter company uh wants to get the job completed, they want to be out by the end of May. And um you will be seeing people around town, starting tomorrow, the subcontractor for the engineering firm for the water main project, it has to do over a hundred test pits. So they will be doing test pits, or you see anybody digging a hole, it's the subcontractor of the uh engineering firm. And the last thing I have is uh the Borough received notice that we have received seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for an all inclusive playground at uh Volunteers Park.
It's not the budget yet though, that'll be in the future, so we have to wait for the state to get final.
I'll talk about it.
We gotta wait for final approval from the state.
Alright, uh Council, uh Councilman Gertenski?
Thank you, Mayor. The Office on Aging uh will be closed early on Friday, May twenty third and on May twenty sixth in observance of Memorial Day. Also, we'd also like to remind you that the first day of the month is sign up and any um affairs that the uh Office on Aging is having or events uh to sign up by that day and uh if you want to reserve yourself a seat. Also, the New Jersey State Property Tax Relief Program is going to have a presentation on May the eighth at Thursday. R S V P is required by May sixth, meaning tomorrow. So if you want to find out a little bit more about the program that the state is running as far as your property tax and everything else, uh your seniors in your state, uh please sign up, go to the program. Okay, with that, uh we have a residential shred paper event coming up and that's Saturday to June twenty eighth from nine till twelve at the DPW ER. With that, that's all on that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dallas?
Uh yeah, just a couple of things, uh the memorial, the Memorial Day Parade uh of course is on May twenty sixth at one P M starting at Hillside in Maine. Uh if there's any groups that still wish to march, they can contact the Cultural Arts at culturalarts@southriver.org and they're also taking sponsors from anyone that would like to sponsor them, that helps with the years to come. And they would also like to thank three vendors that have made donations and that would be Thirty Three's Bar, the Portuguese Fisherman and T Reagan Trucking. Uh other than that, from them, nothing, but as always, look to your South River Library website. I looked at theirs this weekend, they did so much stuff up there today, yesterday. They did uh May the Fourth be with you and they they did a cooking class. They really have some amazing things, their patty was now open in the back if you want to go out there, bring a snack, read a book, it looks absolutely beautiful, so if you get a chance, take a ride on it, that's all.
Councilman DeZemian.
Thank you, Mayor. Um with the power outage that took place on Friday, everyone pretty much is aware of uh as power was being restored throughout the town, the reason why um sections were up and then went back down was because it was putting a stress on the system. And the Borough Electric Department um was doing the best they can to continue to improve the areas that were going down um and restoring them and eventually around ten P M, all the areas in the town were up and restored along with cable. Uh many thanks to our electric department and all the departments of DPW that worked on that throughout the day um to resolve that issue. I'm currently working with Adam DeHaines, who is the developer of our website and I'm creating with him a new tab at the top of uh the main page that will give a status of current projects that are going on in the Borough in the current year. So a lot of people ask questions and it's a good thing to have something out there that'll give updates on these projects such as which roads are being paved, um park improvements, battery project explaining it and what's going on with that, water line replacement project and new development projects. Currently, the tab says projects blog, blog, and this tab will be completed soon and people will go in there and then see what's going on with the current projects throughout the town. Um and it'll be updated uh when we have new information on those projects. And that's all I have here.
Thank you, Councilman DeZemian.
For the Board of Education, their next public meeting is Thursday, May twenty second at seven P M, High School Auditorium. For Recreation Advisory Board update, registration is now open for Pop Warner Football and Cheer, football for ages five through thirteen and cheer for ages three through fourteen, and that is the age as of July thirty first of this year. Registration is also open for the Summer Rec program. This is for South River residents currently in first through seventh grades. This program runs July seventh through August seventh. You can visit the Borough website for more details and to register, go to www.southrivernj.org, click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you'll see a link to enroll. If any issues online, you can always call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. And the next Recreation Advisory Board meeting will be Tuesday, June tenth at seven P M at fifty five Reed Street. Residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes, Mayor, um a couple of things, just to remind everyone that uh on the twenty sixth, do not put out yard waste, that's Monday, more of it, it's gonna be a holiday. And to piggyback on uh what Hank said, um when the power went down that day, a a truck had had not put down its roll off and it took down wires are and took down a couple of poles, right? So when the power goes down that way, we have an electric company that's here in town and we're out there within minutes to start addressing it. Other towns, you know, if you have another power company, I'm not, I don't want to put down J C P now and what P U S E and G, but you would have to report it, they might get there hours and hours later. We were on site right away. And when you put path, when you turn it back on, you turn it back on temporarily and your power might be on and they try to turn it on temporarily so you could have power as quick as possible, but then they gotta shut it down to get other lines back on. So it's not that there's some kind of a, you know, I don't know, people think that they can get better somewhere else. It got done really quick, really efficient, and you really, everyone always thinks the grass is greener somewhere else. It is not. And on top of all that, our rates are staying low and we got out there and got that power back on the same day. So I see a lot of people knocking us. Our, our department was out there right away, it was a big deal of that and uh so that's what I'd say about that and uh what do we have, the Environmental Shade Tree Commission is having a meeting. It's gonna be on uh May fifteenth, it's a Thursday, anyone's welcome to come, it's down at the uh forty eight uh Washington at our Borough Administrator Building. And that's it, that's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, I will open my comments.
What's your?
I don't tell President Seola, believe me.
Um report on E P C, they had their spring gathering uh May first for the businesses to get together and to talk about different things that they can do. Um we had a representative from the state here uh explaining grants, low interest loans for all our small business. Um it was very well received for the people who did attend. A lot of the businesses, for some reason, didn't attend, but we had a great crowd there and everybody was very happy with the information that was passed on. Again, just to touch base with everybody else saying, again, thank you, our DPW workers, our streets, roads, sanitation, electric, um they all do a great job. And like we said, in an emergency, they're out there in no time. So you can't complain about, you know, we don't do the job. Yes, these guys do the job, they work very hard at it and if you see them, thank them for a job that they do. And with that, Mayor, right now, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh we're gonna go to Maryall appointments, Human Relations Commission, Shakira, Repersaw, who put on. Um Alyssa can send resolutions.
I'll prepare all the comments first.
Peter? Peter, we're gonna have to. Alright, I'd like to open it up to the public, please. I'm sorry.
Again, good evening, my name's Joe Donato, I live at thirty Daley Street in South River here and thank you all very much for making me not feel as bad as I did when I first came up here. Uh I appreciate that. Uh again, two things, uh the battery project, I'm gonna be asking for more information so what I got, although it's a lot, I gotta time to digest it and uh we'll see what happens, I've got concerns and questions which uh will be distributed to everyone on the council probably come to that point, so we don't spend a lot of time up here. Uh secondly, yes, our utility department is fantastic, I've seen them in operation. I've watched what they've done. I've seen how they've gone by and just repaired something temporarily gone someplace that's more important. This is a super storm Sandy, I watch those guys, they they are unbelievable. And another group of people that I've uh found by personal experience recently, I went and got a building permit for my home, there was some work in my home. Everyone down at the Borough Hall, Patty in particular, and all the inspectors have been fantastic. They're very concerned about a few, they give some insightful comments and they've always been uh I haven't, I don't think I've met anyone, uh I mean, I'm a civil service worker, so you know, but I mean, I haven't, I haven't met anyone uh in the Borough that has ever been disrespectful.
that has ever been disrespectful or blown me off or anything like this. They are great. I wish there were more people like that. Couple of bad apples from time to time. And nothing goes perfect. I am not perfect. But they do the best they can, and they do an honest job. So I like to commend everybody in the borough, all the borough employees for what they do. It's fantastic. Other than that, if they're gonna give you a piece of good information, people complain about the civil service workers, they don't do this, they don't do that, they're never not responsive, responsive, and we are. And the workers here in South River definitely are. And that's, like I say, from personal experience. So as that being said, you all have a good rest of the month, and I'll see you again next week. Thanks for the time, next month.
Thank you.
Much to 30 Virginia Street. Again, speaking on behalf of the Office on Aging, thank you for supporting that ordinance associated with no parking at 55 Green Street. Also, I urge you to support the 25-16 parking on Maple. Again, seniors park over there. Gives them an opportunity to have more parking. So hopefully, our next meeting can support that. Speaking on behalf now of Jim Hodges of 30 Virginia Street, Donna, condolences to you and your family. Tragic news. Very, very sorry for that. Second off, echoing what we've talked about as far as the electric company. As someone who spent nearly 20 years at a public utility in Pennsylvania, electric public utility, drastically right, you have to call it in, crew has to get gathered, drive in, sometimes they leave a mark out to clear. They do all things before they even get to the job site. Our crews are out there right away. I heard about some of the post things that if we would have had another utility, the power would have been backed on. No way, no way. That was a mess. That was an absolute mess. As Councilman Gina Krasinski stated, a dump truck came through with the dump up. First off, it's a violation of your CBL license. Second off, there's probably an alarm inside that was going off, dump truck was up. And then ripped down all the lines, not just our lines, cable, fiber optics. It was a real, real mess out there. So all of that that took place, crossarms broken, I mean, it was just a real mess. Again, it's a little bit warm out now, so people are running their air conditioners. We are a peak, we're a summer peaking utility as far as electric is concerned. We use more electricity in the summertime. So those air conditioners and everything else starts kicking back on. All three-phase stuff starts kicking back on in the area. It surges, puts a strain on the system. That's why, again, things start tripping. So you have to reset things, and you have to start bringing things on in a very much a planned situation. But for the amount of disastrous work that was out there, and for the time that we actually got service back to everybody in that area, that was amazing. The guys who left the company did a fabulous job, an absolutely fabulous job. If that would have been another one, another utility called Putility, I'd say we'd have been days. We'd have been out for days. Just remember Hurricane Sandy. We were back in in three days. Three days. There were some areas that were out three weeks, four weeks, or longer. That's a testament to the folks that we have working for us here. One last comment. At the end of Colin, before you get into Heritage Hills, there's that small strip that goes one way. That road's been closed, is that open now?
No.
What's going on out there?
So that road was originally supposed to be closed when Heritage Hills and Heritage Landing was made. Unfortunately, it was left open.
Oh, so we're just gonna close that off?
We're closing it off. And the reason we're closing it off is because we have lots of videos showing how people were disrespecting their actual life. So it's a safety hazard.
I understand that. My firsthand knowledge, the bus driver used to use that the right way, going back to DPW and so forth. So it made it easier to pick up some people. Just go out and take advantage of it, it's not a problem. So thank you, folks. And for those that are listening, whatever, Happy Mother's Day.
Anyone else vote in public? First call, second call?
Motion to close public?
Motion by Council President Seola?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Valles?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alyssa, consent resolutions, please?
Whereas Resolution 2025-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, be it is hereby resolved, the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2025-152 to 2025-167. 152, Resolution Authorizing an Abandoned Vehicle Auction. 153, Awarding a Contract to CME Associates for Professional Services. 154, Insertion of Any Special Item of Revenue in Budget. 155, Appoint South River Free Public Library Board of Trustees Members. 156, Appointment of Special Law Enforcement Officers, Class 1. 157, Authorized DPW Vehicle Auction. 158, Appointment of Summer Help to the Department of Public Works. 159, Support for Suitability of Cannabis Business 480 Dispensary. 160, Appointing Warden Health Member. 161, Authorizing the Purchase of Police Dispatch Furniture. 162, Authorize Certain Utility Refunds. 163, Resolution Amending Appointment of OEM Members. 164, Accept April 7, 2025 Regular and Executive Session Minutes. 165, Authorize a Bills and Claims List. 166, Appointing Member to Economic Development Commission. 167, Awarding a Contract to Software Realty Services Group Incorporated for Appraisal Services.
What is your motion? Motion by Councilwoman Valles?
Second.
Second by Council President Seola?
Councilwoman Valles?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zizian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giacopolis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krasinski?
Yes, with the wish to abstain from Resolution 152.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna start Governing Body comments from Councilman James Hallis. I'd just like to wish Happy Mother's Day out there. And the Memorial Day Parade, it's great. Have the, you know, coming down Main Street, it's fun, all the groups are out there. Let's all cheer for them and honor the reason we have the Memorial Day celebration to begin with. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, I just want to further touch on some of the electric care itself that was brought up. I also saw some of the comments that people had made based on the response time and the costs and just some things. I'm a very number analytical-driven person, so I just want to give some statistics that I have because I've asked some questions and I just want to provide some answers for those that have made some comments. The New Jersey Public Power Authority, they published a report. It's based on this coming June 2025 electric rates. At 855 kilowatts per hour, these will be your average rates in the state of New Jersey. Atlantic City Electric, $228. JCP now, $175. PSENG, $208. Rockland Electric, $220. Those IOUs, which are investor-owned utilities, average $207.98. South River will be $177.19. So the idea that South River has high electric rates is just untrue at this point. So I think we should all understand that. There are eight municipally-owned utilities in the state of New Jersey. Lavalette, Madison, Miltown, Park Ridge, Pemberton, Seaside Heights, and Violet. Those eight average $177.09. So South River's $177.19. So when it comes to municipality-owned, we're right on par with the rest. I'll further add that we have made an investment of $1.4 million of capital investments over the last five years. And out of the eight utilities that are owned by municipalities, we're one of only four that have zero debt in our electric utility. Secondly, the SAIDI is an industry metric that is used to measure electric reliability. The lower the number, the better the score. In 2023, New England Utilities had an average SAIDI score of 489.3 minutes. Mid-Atlantic Utilities had a score of 196.8 minutes. That means that the average home in New England was without power for 489 minutes in 2023. And the average home in the Mid-Atlantic was 196 minutes. South River's score was 69 minutes. Now, I understand that as residents, we're impacted by the outages personally. But the idea that our power is not reliable, we're less reliable compared to others, is false based on this data. To add to that, the eight municipality report only included Madison Township SAIDI of 80.4. Therefore, we were the lowest SAIDI out of all the eight municipalities. This was to show the reliability of, I mean, municipality-owned utility. So I just want everyone to understand that 10 years ago, the statement might have been true, but in 2025, it's not. And as we move forward and do things in this borough that make sense, we will continue to keep electric rates low while everyone else goes up. And that's our promise to you, and that's, this is published data. This is not an opinion or a Facebook post, it's a fact. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Zizian?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to acknowledge Mr. Ivanovich, a lifelong resident of South River, passed away this past Friday. Saying his name because in the past years, he was on the municipal allowance and the Planning Board Committee. Condolences to his family. The next free concert at the Imperial Music Center will be Sunday, June 1st at 2:00. It's a free concert. It's at the Imperial Music Center. It's a lot of fun, good music. And Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valles?
I just have one thing. I just want to thank everybody for, my sister told me not to do this, for your thoughts and prayers on the passing of my sister. We appreciate everything that everybody says. So. You go.
Councilman Krasinski?
You go after it. It's good to be here.
Again? Okay, first off, I'd like to extend my condolences personally. But also, I'd like to thank the public service workers of South River for all the fine work they do between our police, our fire, especially our DPW for maintaining our parks, roads, streets, electric utility, order department, everything else. Also, I wish all of the mothers out there a Happy Mother's Day. And Memorial Day is one day that we remember those that went before us that gave us this land of freedom. Thank you.
Council President Seola?
Thank you. Again, condolences, father for your sister, your family the same. Like to say Happy Mother's Day to everybody, and Happy Memorial Day. And please turn out for the parade. And if you see a veteran, thank him for his service. Without them, I don't know where we'd be. But again, thank a veteran. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, here we are, we got another $750,000 in grant money from the New Jersey DTE Garden State Preservation Trust for the greenmakers. This is for our playgrounds, to the exact Kretkowski Park. Nice to you. Huh?
Volunteers.
Volunteers, sorry, volunteers. And congratulate the administration, nice work by Joe as well as the daughter. We also received another grant, $89,000. Governor Murphy, along with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, for pickleball courts at Fargo Park. Yes, removing parks forward. Now, anybody says these parks are not getting established, they think they're well-established. And I thank the administration once again for the work that they do with their banks. DPW, Police Department, Fire Department, and especially the OEM, did a remarkable job at the truck accident that happened on Wayard Avenue, taking out two poles affecting pretty much the south side of the South River. The electricity was down for quite a while, but they came forward, and they stayed around the clock until this was back up and running. So I congratulate each and every one of these people for doing a thing good. Happy to announce that the council, as well as myself, we will be hosting the Fosse &amp; Pumpkin this coming October. We will have a date presented at our next council meeting. Anyone that's interested in helping out, reach out to me, as well as the rest of the council. We'll let you know when our next meeting's gonna be. Memorial Day, it's a day of remembrance. Thank your best. They're the reason that we're here today. Weather's getting good, really good, exception of this week, lots of rain. Kids are out playing, please drive slowly. I can't tell you how much this means to me when you're driving under the speed limit as possible. I know I was asking a lot through these inner streets, but these kids are running up and down. And last, for all you mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day. Have a happy and healthy day. That's all I have to say. Thank you. We are going to be going into our executive session. You're not gonna be taking any actions when we come out. You're more than welcome to hang out if you like, it's up to you. Alyssa, can you please read the 2025-168?
Resolution 2025-168, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the general public from immunity of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinions of circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the here and after a specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed as follows. Property acquisition and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved, that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. The Borough Council, the borough of South River, may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion to go into closed?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Krasinski, second by Councilwoman Valles?
Councilwoman Valles?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zizian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giacopolis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krasinski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.